Thanks in Jesus.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, Mr. Edwards, would you introduce our student speaker for this evening, please?
Yes, sir, I certainly will, and I would proudly like to introduce you all to Tamea Pellerin. She is a fifth grade student at Emile Elementary School, and she's an excellent student that has been enrolled in the district's Gifted and Talented Program since she was in kindergarten. She loves participating in extracurricular activities ranging from, get this, y'all, educational, sports, to theater. Tamea won first place in the Emile Science Fair Contest and Steam Fest as well. She has also snagged two feature roles in the past year with the Boston Bassdrop Opera House, production of The Wizard of Oz, and Willy Wonka in The Chocolate Factory. To me, I have to ask, what was your favorite role between those two?
Probably as an Oompa Loompa and Willy Wonka.
That's a great call. She was recently named a news anchor app for Emile's Morning Newscast Project, enjoys art, playing basketball, writing, reading, poetry, sharing her ideas with her classmates. Tamea hopes to someday become a teacher, and I can tell you, we are already looking at you. You could teach Gifted and Talented, you could teach theater, you have a lot of talents here, math. So you just keep in touch with us, okay? Tamea, thank you for being here.
Thank you for the introduction. Thank you for the introduction. Hello, I'm Tamea Pellerin, and I'd like to discuss what justice means to me. As we sell away Black History Month, I think of my grandmother, great-grandmother, and great-great-grandmother. Believe it or not, I had the opportunity to have had three grandmas alive at the same time. You can imagine life was different for them growing up in tough times. To them, justice meant doing simple things. For my grandmother, justice meant she got to attend a segregated school. For my great-grandmother, justice meant being able to freely vote. My great-great-grandmother, it meant being able to vote at all, even if she had to pay poll taxes. Because of their history, I can set my sights on different goals. To me, justice is being able to compete fairly, to be considered for positions in school, and to be judged by nothing more than my abilities. Standing here is a type of justice for me. I was chosen for this because I can do it. So knowing that my good deeds and talents are seen by all is justice to me. Just as my grandmothers wanted to be educated at good schools and to participate in voting, I stand here today with these same desires and hopes for my future. While justice can mean different things to others, we must all keep faith. Fighting for justice is always worth it. Thank you.
Tamea, before you get too far away, I'd like you to introduce who came with you. And we have a gift for you for doing such an outstanding job. Thank you for sharing your words. Who's with you today?
I have my aunt, my grandma, both of my grandmas, my mom, my great-grandma, my Aunt Ma Cat, and Miss Malone. And my teacher, teacher, Miss Bullock.
And your teacher. Congratulations to all of you, and thank you for sharing her with us. Each month, I take the opportunity to meet with what we call the Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and this is a group of students that are selected by their peers to give direct feedback to myself and to my administration on the issues that they're facing in our schools. And so each board meeting, we ask them to come and please sit, an advisement to the school board on things that they're facing, or any comments, or the board may have questions of them. And I'd like to introduce you to two of these wonderful students this evening. Well, actually, I'm gonna have them introduce themselves. If you'll just tell us the school you go to, your grade level, and what you plan to do after high school, either career or into school. Gabby? It'll hear you. Go ahead and just kind of talk loud.
Hi, my name is Gabriela Lozano, and I'm a senior at the Colorado River Collegiate Academy. I plan on going to Sam Houston State University and majoring in education, and then after, I want to get my master's in Trinity in Fort Worth, and I want to go into ministry.
Thank you, Gabby. Isabella?
Hi, my name is Isabella Conrady, and I also go to Colorado River Collegiate Academy. I'm a freshman there, and after high school, I would love to go to UT and get my doctor's degree to become a pediatrician.
Fantastic. I did ask the board to take it easy on you all, not ask really hard questions, okay? So, just so you know. All right, thank you, Mr. Measnik.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. All right, now we'll move into our recognitions and presentations. We have the Bassdrop High School Skills USA Automotive Technology, as well as the Cedar Creek High School Family, Career, and Community Leadership of America. Our presenter tonight is Amanda Brantley. She's the Director of College and Career and Military Readiness. Welcome.
I will be Amanda. No, I'm just kidding. Thank you very much. My name is Avery Barrera. I work for Amanda. I'm the CTE Coordinator for the district, and she nominated me to come up and do the presentation. So, we would love to recognize two student groups this evening that have had some great results at district competition and are moving on to state competitions. So the first group is Skills USA. Skills USA is an organization that serves teachers, high school students, college students, preparing for careers in technical, skilled, and service occupations, including health occupations, automotive, a lot of the different trades groups that are part of that organization. And so, at Bassdrop High School, we have a great Skills USA chapter. They compete typically in our automotive technology competitions. For the automotive quiz bowl team, they placed third at district. That included Isaac Vallejos, Ryan Nelson, Raulio Mendez, Charles Stanford, Matthew Ratten, John Ruiz, and Hunter Prater. Moving on to students who are going to go to the state competition, that's going to be April 3rd through 6th in Corpus Christi. In aviation service technology, Ethan Miller placed first. In marine service technology, Sammy Piper placed second. In power equipment service technology, Isaac Vallejos placed second. And in customer service, Lena McDonald placed second. Please congratulate these students for their accomplishments. Our next group to be recognized are the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Chapter at Cedar Creek High School. FCCLA, the acronym, offers opportunities for students to pursue careers that supports families and the workforce. Since 1945, FCCLA members have been making a difference in their community by addressing important personal, work, and societal issues through family and consumer sciences education. In the region four competition, we had a team of Jonathan Bueno, Isabella Contreras, and Victor Avilas, who placed fifth in sports nutrition, and they will be moving on to the state competition. And then Emily Harrington, Ariana Jaramillo, and Laura Carino placed fifth for public policy advocacy. And these students will compete for the state contest April 12th through 14th in Dallas. Please congratulate them. Thank you very much.
Get this evening?
So I am not exactly sure. We had a kind of a quick turnaround for recognition. If any of the students are here this evening, if they wouldn't mind standing up or stepping forward?
Correct, yeah, just come on through and let the board, and let us acknowledge them. If not, yeah, come on up, please.
Hello.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I just wanted to make sure that we welcomed you and honored your accomplishments, so round of applause.
All right, moving along to our two high school bands. They had the TMEA All Regions and Area, and here tonight is Chico Portillo, our Director of Fine Arts.
Good afternoon, Board, Mr. Edwards. Thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to recognize some of outstanding students and teachers in the fine arts world in our school district. Here to first talk about the achievements of the All Region High School Band is Mr. Kenneth Gilbert, and several of his Bassdrop High School students. Mr. Gilbert?
Yeah, come on up here, guys. Come on up here. Yeah, come up here. Yeah, you can just stand in. Yeah. Thank you very much for this recognition, Board, and everyone here. I just want to say, I made notes this time, so I don't mess up here. But these are some of the students, as you see in the pictures, that auditioned for the region band. They start preparing three pieces back in July, and then they go for auditions in November, early December, and they can qualify for one of the two region bands. And these students, along with some of everyone in the picture, qualified for a place in the region band. And then we had two students that advanced to the area level, and so they got to audition in January for the All-State band. We didn't have anyone make the All-State band this year, but they did a great job. And the students that we have here tonight are Destiny here on bass clarinet. We have Carlos on euphonium. Alejandra on B-flat clarinet. Cash on the end on trumpet. And then Jasmine auditioned on piccolo and flute, and she advanced to area on piccolo. And I just want to say a special thanks to their parents and all the parents that support our students with, you know, financially, through private lessons, our band boosters who raised money to get in, teachers to help work on this process. A lot of this is not us as the directors, it's the extra teachers that we're able to bring in, and then the students that are able to practice a lot for months on their own, hours on end on their own. I want to say a special thanks to our principal, Ms. Gabriel. Mr. Portillo, our Fine Arts Director, who supports us every day. He was in our rehearsal this morning. He's always a great help. And then, of course, to our admin at the school and our school board for supporting fine arts in Bassdrop. We do feel very supported. I do have a lot of parents that tend to say things like, "Well, this organization gets all this, and this organization gets all that." And I remind them all the time that Bassdrop supports fine arts, and our budgets are good, and, of course, we'll take more. But we do feel supported, and just thank you for supporting all the variety of opportunities for students in our district. So thank you very much.
To work on like three college-level pieces to audition, and that's hard. It's like calculus for musicians. It's real difficult, so we're very proud of their work. Next is Mr. Dalton Davis and the Cedar Creek High School Band. Welcome, Dalton.
Good evening. Again, thank you very much for the opportunity to recognize these amazing students. This is just a small portion of the Cedar Creek kids that made it. I'm gonna push this button, see if it goes to the next one. Nope. Just advance. Oh, there we go. Okay. We had 12 students make it this year. It was the highest number that Cedar Creek's ever had in the history of the school. I think the highest number before that has been eight, so a 50% increase. And before us tonight, we have Sean Bettis, who made second-chair flute in the symphonic band, Trevor Culpepper, who made fifth-chair percussion in the symphonic band, Jackie Bond who made third-chair in the wind ensemble, and Shayla Mendez, who made first-chair piccolo in the symphonic band. Couple of things to brag. Sean was also in the musical as one of the leads for In the Heights, if you might have got to see that recently. Trevor Culpepper was the second percussionist in the history of the program to ever make region band. And Shayla was actually our soloist in marching season, so if you guys ever came out to one of the football games, she was there for that. And Jackie, I get to brag on her now because she advanced to area. She was also our region orchestra student earlier in the year, and then this year, she made area, and she missed All-State by just a couple bits. But it's been a pleasure working with these students and getting them up to that highest level, just like Mr. Portillo said. It's a lot of effort, it's a lot of dedication, a lot of time to get up to that highest echelon to compete across kids from the entire city. So, again, they definitely should be recognized. So, thank you for allowing us this time to recognize these students.
Thank you. All right, now moving along to our National Merit Commended finalist, Odin Turner from Circa, 12th grader. We have Cheryl Pinkston here. She's our Advanced Academic Coordinator. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. Odin, come on. Good evening, Mr. Edwards and school board members. Earlier this fall, we shared with you the good news that Odin Turner had been named a semifinalist in the National Merit Scholarship Program. I told you we planned to return. Well, here we are. I'm excited to announce we have our one student who is now advanced to the National Merit finalist. He has done this, he's been through distinguished performance and high potential for future academic achievements. All National Merit Scholarship winners will be chosen from this select group. It is the top 1% in the United States. Odin has shown his academic excellence from his time at Bluebonnet Elementary until this day as a part of a student group at Circa. Odin has enjoyed being part of the National Honor Society Student Council, competing in UIL. He served as the school mascot, and he's currently working on a school end-of-the-year song. Up on graduation, Odin will spend the summer in Japan and Taiwan before beginning Texas Tech University on a full scholarship in the Rawls School of Business Honor Program. He is joined by his parents Julian and Emily Turner, and his sister Crystal, along with several past and current teachers who are here, including myself, to share in this moment. We are all very proud of all he has done to reach this accomplishment, and know he will do amazing things in the future. We want to say congratulations to Odin, and I need him to tell you about his outfit real quickly, because he selected it special for today.
See, usually, I would go with neon. I wore that last time I was here. I was gonna do that, but they're gonna talk about Texas, so I have the Texas shirt on, the pants on, and I still have the U.S. neon. So I have the neon socks.
Congratulations. All right, at this time, we'll move into our open forum. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district and from district employees. Anyone that has signed up or wishes to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so at this time. The board asks that the comments pertain to public education. Remember that the board may not discuss or act upon any issue that are not posted on the agenda. If an issue is mentioned, is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion of that issue until the appropriate time during the meeting. At no time will the board entertain questions from the audience and ask that all audience be respectful of other speakers and presenters. The board will not allow the use of any derogatory comments towards any individual, staff member, teacher, or board member. The board has adopted a complaint policy that are designed to secure, at the lowest administrative level, a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. Complaints brought by students and their parents may be heard in accordance with the policy FNG legal and FNB local. We will be allowing a little over 30 minutes for open forum. We have 19 speakers signed up. I believe that takes us to 38 minutes, and each speaker will be given two minutes to speak, and we will take those in the order that they signed up. And so our first speaker, if you could come to the podium, is Jayden Navara? Navida, sorry. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jayden Navida. I am a second-year teacher at BISD. I was hired under the District of Innovation Plan. Two years ago, I was highly encouraged by BISD to enroll in Hartwell University's online program to complete my bachelor's degree and earn certification. Because of BISD's recommendation, I fully trusted that I would be able to achieve this goal by April 2025, and I was especially persuaded by the fact that they have an agreement with Hartwell, offering BISD employees 50% off of tuition. This was the program that I was offered and that I enrolled in. Now, two years later, while speaking to a Hartwell advisor, she has explained to me that Hartwell University is not only unaccredited, but they do not even offer Texas certification. We will be receiving Arizona certification and then be responsible for paying to transfer our certification to Texas. None of this information was disclosed to me or to many of my colleagues before enrolling or while in the process of becoming teachers. We have been given essentially three options. The first one is to continue with Hartwell in the hopes that they become accredited, get our Arizona certification, pay to transfer to Texas, and just hope and pray there are no issues with that. Another option offered to us was to transfer to an accredited university, but due to Hartwell's unaccredited status, our credits are useless anywhere but Hartwell University. That is not an option for us. If we feel uncomfortable, our choice is to start over. For many of us, that might mean four more years of school, two more years of school. For those of us who are DOI teachers in the classroom, we have three years to earn our degree, so that may jeopardize our employment. Many of us, we are asking that the district give a firm answer on when and for how long they will extend deadlines for DOI teachers to meet these agreements for certification. We, if our certification is delayed as a result of Hartwell University's misalignment with the TEA certification guidelines. We would also like to know if the district will be covering the fees we will incur as a result of Hartwell only offering an Arizona certification, which, again, was completely unknown to us. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Desiree Devilla.
Hello. I would like to first start off with stating that I am a parent and employee at Cedar Creek Elementary. My purpose is to advocate for my colleagues and former students of Hartwell University. Our district served us this university on a platter, but they withheld the information that Hartwell that we were enrolling in is not accredited. The accreditation has been pending since 2021, according to Hartwell employee. I would just like to mention how heartbreaking we are and how our dreams are shattered because we wanted to be leaders for BISD. And as we all know, BISD, in BISD, we trust. Right now, we feel robbed, scammed, and very disheartened. We have put our marriage on hold, my children, and family events, everything. So, we just feel like we were guinea pigs of this program. So, we just feel like we were guinea pigs of this program. That's what I am for now. Thank you.
Story. Story, I'm sorry.
Just a quick question. Can the Presidiary Officer use his powers under BED Local to expand to three minutes instead of the two for this topic, since there's so many people from the community so that the community can fully express themselves and the board can glean from their wisdom?
We have extended from 30 minutes to the 38, trying to fit everybody in.
So, no, that's okay. It's your discretion. I just want to see if you're willing to use it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Well, things changed this year in big ways. The Supreme Court ended 53 years of the Lemon versus Kurtzman pursuit of chasing faith out of schools. They ruled to openly encourage faith expression as a normal American experience in our nation's public schools, even in official activities and staff. Texas has now passed SB 763 law to encourage all school districts to implement chaplains in an official school role, and is now requiring by March 1st to vote yes or no on whether to have official chaplains do official school services. So, I want to bring clarity to confusion tonight. The vote tonight is only about one main thing. Will you allow chaplains officially or not? If you say yes, then the state is asking you to answer a secondary question of voting whether these official services provided by chaplains will be paid or volunteer or a combination of both. The resolution presented at your previous meeting is wrongly trying to split the difference to seem to say yes to chaplains while actually voting no. It's a resolution not written by any administrator from BISD or a school board member. It was pushed onto our district by someone at the Texas Association of School Boards. Allowing chaplains to come in as volunteers, just like any other volunteer in an existing volunteer program, is not at all what this new state law is talking about. The new Texas law is about the value of spiritual guidance and helping improve and exponentialize educational outcomes. Chaplains are defined in a completely different chapter of the Education Code, a new one, by the way, by this law from other rules. They are not the same as academic counselors, nor are they even funded with the same state funding. To be clear, if you vote for this resolution as proposed in the last meeting, you are indeed voting against having chaplains provide official chaplain services as official school services. This is a no-risk action to instead vote yes and to turn down this resolution tonight. In other words, you'd vote no on this resolution and then create a new one. This is a no-risk action. You could even vote to try out official chaplains for a year and then vote no if you don't think it helps. You don't even have to have to work out the details tonight, and you could, a year from now, undo it if you want. I would say to vote no on this resolution as it is presently written or amend it tonight to allow for chaplains as official school services. Alternatively, you could table it to next week and replace it with an official pro-chaplain resolution that doesn't create false comparisons or trade-offs between completely different school services. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is John Eason.
Given us some time here. My name is John Eason, and I represent the Bastrop Christian Minister Alliance as the residing president at this moment. I have had four children graduate from BISD. Three of them are currently teachers in BISD, and I have three grandchildren in BISD. So, I have some skin in the game here. When I first heard of the opportunity of possible chaplaincy, I have to tell you something. My heart was really moved. Actually, tears came to my eyes, not just because I'm a pastor or thought it an opportunity to proselytize or go in and change culture mores to things that I don't agree with, but I really thought it was an opportunity to encourage, to be a listening ear, to be present, kind of what chaplains are all around our country. So, what I'm asking you, and I also had concerns too, probably some of the same concerns that you guys would have. I get it. But when I thought about the rewards of it and the possibilities of it, I thought the risk, the effort, the challenges are worth it. I really do. And so what I'm asking you guys, if y'all would, just for a moment, take off administrative hats, put on leadership hats, and be proactive. I think it would really raise the school morale, and we need some school morale boosters. So, I end with a famous quote that you are gonna know at least if you're over 40, George Bernard Shaw. Some ask after looking around, they say, "Why?" We dream about things and say, "Why not?" And that's what I'm asking you guys to do. Why not? Thank you, guys.
All right, our next speaker is Naomi Potts.
Well, good evening, board, and first, Mr. Edwards and the board. My name is Naomi Andrade Potts. I am a Bastropian, born and raised. Don't let this gray hair fool you. I graduated Bastrop High School, but also I was thinking about as I listened to Tamika and Isabella and Gabriela, how they want to be teachers. Well, my dream was to be a teacher, even at this age. I've been at CCE for almost nine years. I have other, this is my second career. But I am talking for, also speaking for my Hartwell enrollees. We were not given all the information. We did not attend a forum with Hartwell. Our principal was zealous and wanted us all to be accredited, to be teachers and be certified because we had a shortage. The information that we got, and I have documentation here, not one, that it mentioned the fact that Hartwell was not accredited. Did not talk about how Hartwell, that we had to get our certification in Arizona and then come back and get certified here in Texas. But I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think the couple of grievances that we had is, BISD had two years to get with us and say, "Hey, guys, they still haven't gotten their accreditation. What do you want to do?" Because that choice was taken away from us when we were not, when we didn't have that information. You know, we received information that they went in December. Well, December would have been a good time where January would say, "Hey, enrollees, they're still not accredited. What do you want to do?" That choice was taken away from us. And the point is that, you know, I love BISD. I'm a graduate, and we are family. I'm just heartbroken, and my dreams are shattered because my window of opportunity is closing, closing. I'm on the other side. These guys are so young, they have a lot to offer, and they'll be great, awesome teachers. But because of this glitch, this shattering, I don't know where I'm gonna fall, you know? But I just pray that the Lord would get them accredited, because we can't take those credits anywhere else. They're null and void. So, I pray for those who are here, and pray that the Lord gets them accreditation. But anyway, that's all I would say. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Robert K. Long, Senior. Mr. Long?
My name's Bob Long. I'm a chaplain and have been an ordained minister with the same credentialing organization for 53 years. When I graduated from Bastrop High School in 1962, we were still receiving Christian input in various ways, such as starting each day with Bible reading and prayer over a central speaker system. Teachers were allowed to pray and comfort students. There were no discussions or problems about sex change, suicide, school safety issues, drugs, bullying, lack of respect of authority, teacher or student retention, and most students, when they graduated, were competing for good grades to ensure their future. After reading several of the Supreme Court rulings on Bible reading and prayer passed for public schools during the early '60s, it seems that the intention of the court was for the public schools to not require Bible reading and prayer, as it stands now. Now that our Texas legislature has made it clear that the public school system can have a chaplaincy, volunteer or paid, the Bastrop Christian Ministerial Alliance and the police and sheriff chaplains would like to help BISD build a local school chaplaincy that would be available to minister to the students as well as the teachers and administrations of BISD. We ask that tonight, you vote yes. The Bastrop Christian Ministerial Alliance and chaplains have been called out for years during fire and flood disasters, other emergencies, for godly ministry and counsel. Okay?
Our next speaker is Dale Burke.
Good evening, and thank you for hearing our presentation tonight about chaplains in the school. I'm a chaplain with the Bastrop Police Department, the lead chaplain there. I'm also chaplain with the county, with the sheriff's office, and it's been an honor and a privilege to do that. I'm also a retired teacher from Bastrop ISD at Gateway, where I was assigned for 17 years. And during that time, actually before that time, I was in the Air Force as a training instructor for Air Force Reserve recruiters nationwide. And in doing that, I was preparing, did a lot of building, developing programs. And that's what we would like to do here with the chaplains program, as Chaplain Wong was talking about. We would like to work with the board, with the teachers here, to develop an outstanding chaplain's program. As a chaplain here, I get, and also working as a, when I retired, I'm working with students that have dropped out of high school. That's what I do. I counsel those students. I work with a lot of broken people, getting them back. I worked, while I was at Gateway, I'd worked with students there who, many of them who were broken, and they're now out by planting seeds of hope and encouragement. They're out there now with having employment, and many of them, if they stumbled, they've gotten back because I always gave them the thing of, "The choices you make dictate the life you lead." And those, as we planted those seeds, along with other teachers there and staff that we had, we were able to see lives change. I had a student I mentored that was at the, right at the edge of suicide. I was able to work with him. He's now got his GED. He's working. He's a plumber. He's doing outstanding. We have many of those stories that we say, "Chaplains are out there." I work with the community a lot, but I'd love to be back with the school, getting things there, because we can make a difference together, because we have an outstanding, outstanding school, and I'm very proud of it and want to continue on doing that here. Thank you.
All right, our next presenter is Kendrick. Is it Steger? Steger? Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
Hi, my name is Keatrick Steger. I am a senior chaplain here in Bastrop County. I love working with the sheriff and police department as well. In 2016, I became a certified chaplain with the organization I'm currently certified under as well. 2019, I moved to Bastrop to be a chaplain for a therapeutic treatment center. There, we provide trauma-informed care for at-risk youth, young ladies who are survivors of child sex trafficking. Youth working through that type of trauma have benefited greatly from consistent, loving, nonjudgmental care of chaplains on our campus, and I believe our youth in BISD would benefit from the same loving environment. I believe that many of our youth's performance in the classroom reflect their ability to have a felt safety environment throughout the entire campus. From TEA Performance Report, Bastrop in 2022, 23, there were 12,506 students enrolled. Only 34% of all students graduated above level. BISD received overall level of C rating with TEA, most recently posted annual ratings. Previously, it was a B. Only 48% of the graduates from BISD are college or career or military-ready. This is compared to 70% students throughout statewide. There were 858 high school graduates in BISD in the time of this report. The good news is, BISD has a lower dropout rate than general across the state, and that's good news. As us Bastropians, we believe that we all want to advance upon the shoulders of our successes and be strengthened in the areas of our vulnerabilities. Bastrop has been positioned well for this advancement with our chaplains, who are filled with integrity, love, and experience. We currently have certified chaplains, life coaches, and various other skill sets that will help set an environment right. The chaplain program will serve with honesty and integrity, and it will be committed to seeing that our youth today will fulfill their dreams that they so much want to do. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Sheriff Cook. Maurice?
Well, first of all, thank y'all for having me. I would tell you that we do have an effective program at the sheriff's office when utilizing the chaplains. And you know, I'm not talking about for those people in the back that don't have any choice, but to talk to people and so forth. I'm talking about the employees up front. It's refreshing to see them come by every Thursday. They pray with the staff. The staff seeks them out often to have private prayer. If they're not there, what would we be doing? We would not be seeking their help. So, just having them available and the volunteer, that they want to give up their time, they want to be seen and heard in the public schools. I support them being there. They have been a great value to the sheriff's office. I think y'all could benefit well from the chaplains that I have been exposed to and the sheriff's office chaplains especially. They've been vetted. Once again, we deal with them every Thursday. Our employees receive a great benefit from it, and I think the students, instead of police intervention sometimes, I think that God's intervention would be much better served than police intervention. So, thank y'all for having me.
Okay, our next presenter is Don Odell.
I'm a local business owner, father, and a grandparent. Just gonna go off my notes. I'm not gonna go off my notes. I'll go by history, what I've seen personally. One, we are all teachers. Not to belittle the teachers that are paid in here. You guys are awesome, good, bad, indifferent. We all impact students. We all want the best for students. They are given tools. We are individuals given tools. You guys grant those tools. Chaplain in a school, I think, is one of the best tools we can give. I used to live in Washington State. I watched Coach Kennedy. If those of you know, that was the coach that took his football players out on the field right after the game. Bremerton High School, at that time, had the lowest dropout rate, lowest pregnancy rate, lowest drug rate, lowest crime rate for its students, highest graduation rate, highest scholarship rate. When they pulled him out, within three years, that school became the highest criminal rate, highest dropout rate. They're putting him back in. I watched this firsthand. For those who don't know, Bremerton High School is inside a Navy town. It's all E1 through E3, which is the lowest paid in the military, I know firsthand. To take or keep chaplains away from school is to keep a tool out of a child's reach for them to exceed their best. I gave, as a parent, my child every tool possible. As a school district, I expect you to do the same, to make sure every child in the school district has every tool possible. And a chaplain in a school is a tool that needs to be used, that needs to be there for them to use. Thank you.
All right, our next presenter is Sierra Porter.
My name is Sierra Porter. I'm a student at Cedar Creek Middle School, and I agree with chaplains in the Bastrop School District. When I was having problems in school, Bastrop Chaplain had a listening ear to my pain in school. She listened and let me express myself. I feel like she cared. I learned ways to handle bullying and learned how to communicate that helped me with students and other school problems. I felt better about myself. I felt better about myself and handled my problems better. Please consider chaplains for school because sometimes you need someone there on campus that is caring and can encourage us students so we don't feel so alone. Thank you for listening to my heart.
All right, next we have David Porter. It's gonna be hard to follow.
I know. That's my daughter. So my name's David Porter. I'm a parent of a child that goes to Cedar Creek Middle School. When my daughter was having difficultities in school with students at academia, she worked with a chaplain that was kind to her and had a listening ear to my daughter. Sierra, when she was struggling in school, the chaplain never pressured her but listened to her and helped Sierra learn that she was important and valued. I'm for chaplaincy in the school system for sure. I have witnessed firsthand how chaplains can help by listening, encouraging, and offering tools to assist with environmental stressors such as bullying, depression, and other school factors. The chaplain helped bring hope and encouragement and determination to my daughter in the time of need in practical and spiritual ways without pressuring her and allowing her to express her troubles. As a parent, the chaplain helped my daughter regain confidence and determination to succeed in school with friends and scholastic accomplishment. That in turn gave me confidence as a parent and hope for my daughter's needs being met with success. I am very proud of my daughter Sierra. When she was struggling in the fifth and sixth grade with these issues, the chaplain started working with her. With Sierra's determination and the chaplain help, she graduated to the seventh grade. She is now in honors classes, and she is currently on the AB Honor Roll.
All right, our next presenter here is Dylan Conisales. Dylan, okay.
My name is Dylan Conisales. I'm a small business owner within the community, and my wife is a teacher. So I want to tell you a story that happened two years ago. She comes home one day and she's like, honey, guess what? Bastrop Independent School District has a program for us to go through and educate ourselves to become teachers. I'm gonna do it. My job is to support her. Fantastic. That's beautiful. I'm proud of you. Remind you, this continues for two years. She's missing things, she's missing birthday parties, she's typing away. We have arguments about this because the financial stress that it's taking to pursue her education. Well, my wife tells me, like, she makes hundreds on papers and, remind you, she's never liked school. In high school, she didn't want to go to school, she didn't like this, but she's a teacher, she's an educator now, and she tells me that she does this, not for the money. There's no money in this. She does it because she loves her children. So Bastrop Independent School District, she came to me a few days ago and she says, I've been going through school and it was all for nothing. I've been working late nights, it was all for nothing. My credits don't account for anything. Oh, the frustration I had. But anyways, that's neither here nor there. There's two different things. There's Hartwell University and there's Bastrop Independent School District. Bastrop, you say that you want your teachers to succeed, but you provided them a program, as well as you provided them other programs. You provided them a program that is not accredited. It might get accredited, but as of right now, educators just graduated and they can't use that. So you're not providing them the tools to succeed. What if 90% of your teachers, y'all have a staffing issue, what if 90% of your teachers went to Hartwell? Y'all would still have a staffing issue because they can't go to school with that accreditation. I just want to let you know to all the teachers, I know my time's up. I'm here to back you on everything, especially my wife. If Bastrop Independent School District doesn't do anything for y'all, myself, your children, God's gonna take care of you. Have faith.
My name is Sharon Beadle. I'm a fourth-generation Texan, born and raised in Orange, Texas. When I went to school, the most egregious crime committed was running in the hallway and chewing gum in the classroom. Obviously, as some speakers have already mentioned, and I don't have time to go through the list, but we know that some of the things that our children are experiencing today are beyond egregious and harmful and hurtful. So I'm here to advocate for these children and to plead with you to set aside any and all other concerns you may have and vote yes for these children. This, I believe, is their last hope. Thank you for your time.
All right, our next presenter is Judge Bintesquie.
Thank you, and I'm here today as a private citizen and not in an elected position, but I want to say that to you, and I feel like it's a certainty that you're going to say yes, the question is, and? Because I'm afraid that things get lost, and how will we know? What are the chaplains going to do? What are going, what is your vision for that? And to the chaplains, what's your vision? Because this is not the end, this is the beginning. You have to define what you're going to want. If I were to put on that other hat, I hear the CPS cases and the juvenile cases, and I hear a lot of things that are, come out of the school. And taking that hat off again, as a believer, I know there are solutions to a lot of that. There are a thousand ways that the chaplains can help and be there, but you have to be visible, you have to have a vision. This can't get lost. This is a blank slate, and you, you're not going to have definitions, and that's what has to come out of a lot of this. You need to have go-to people, you need to have go-to people, you need to coordinate this because there are a thousand ways that this can matter. My great-grandfather was a World War I combat chaplain, and what did he do? Everything. Everything that was needed because he was in combat. And you are in combat, and you have to be seen, you have to be defined, you have to make this the beginning, and this is not the end. A vote here is just a door opening. You have to define what you're going to do. You have to push, and you have to make yourself seen and heard and known, and you start that by coming up with protocols and things you're doing and mattering because they matter. Thank you.
Next speaker is Margarita Igo. Did I pronounce the last name correctly?
Igo. Margarita Igo. Hi, I'm Margarita Igo. I have three children. I have been working here in Bastrop downtown for five years, and I would like to share with you my letter. Humans are made of three parts, spirit, soul, and body. For humans to live a holy, full life, they must feed all three parts. Our student population is experiencing a starvation of their spirituality, while our government, our schools, and our culture have become a passive conductor on feeding the important aspect of a person's spiritual life. The result of this passivity is an emotional catastrophe for this generation, and it can be seen affecting our society in all areas today. Look back through the history of this beautiful Christian nation. Research and see for yourselves, there are a difference in behavior of students in our schools back when government, schools, and culture recognized that the value, honor, and shared importance of feeding human spirituality is vital for a successful society. Board members, we are asking you to vote yes for chaplains in our school, and I would like to share with you, I have been here in downtown Bastrop working for five years. We are a nonprofit organization. Mothers come to me, and they share the struggle of their students. So when you vote yes, please vote for a chaplain that speaks Spanish, because these mothers come to me, a lot of mothers, and they say, my child is going through bullying, my child is using drugs at 13 years of age, and she's being sexually harassed by the men or the young men that is selling her drugs. So please vote yes for chaplains. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Nathan Bracewell.
I'm gonna go first. Good evening, school board members and Mr. Edwards. My name is John Dawson, pitcher and third baseman. We, the Bastrop High School senior baseball players, stand before you today, filled with gratitude for the incredible support that you have shown to our school and our baseball program. When I first arrived at Bastrop High School two years ago, I got the impression that we weren't very proud of our program and that we just kind of forgot about it. It seemed to be lost in the shuffle, overlooked, and underappreciated. But in the last two years, everything has changed. It's all thanks to our parents, coaches, school leadership, and the school board's unwavering commitment to our team. The transformation we have witnessed, particularly with the improvements to our facilities, including the installation of a new baseball turf field, is nothing short of remarkable. This field is not just a patch of artificial grass, it is a symbol of hope, dedication, and belief in our potential. It provides us with a platform to excel, to showcase our talents, and to take pride in representing our school. Thank you, board.
Yes, it is. Good evening. I'm Nathan Bracewell, an outfielder and a pitcher. On behalf of our baseball team, I want to thank each of you for choosing to invest in our program. We understand the responsibility you bear as stewards of the district's finances. Your decision to spend money on field and facility upgrades demonstrates your genuine concern for the well-being and development of our student athletes. These much-needed improvements have instilled a sense of purpose and pride in our players, coaches, and community supporters. We can now walk onto our new field with a renewed sense of confidence and excitement. And not only do we have a new turf field and other associated upgrades, but players and family members came together in January to clean and organize in preparation for the new season. Ruling this, to invest in us, has been a catalyst for unity and progress. Again, we thank you and we hope to see you at a home game soon.
All right, Easton Allen, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Easton Allen. I'm a pitcher and first baseman, and I'll be attending the University of the Ozarks in Arkansas next year to play baseball and work on earning a degree in education. I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for all the hard work, effort, and most importantly, the funding that went into putting turf on our baseball field and making it look the best it ever has. We will be able to end our time here at Bastrop High School on a positive note. As I embark on the next chapter of my life as a collegiate athlete, I will carry with me the invaluable lessons and memories created on this field. I'm internally grateful for the role you have played in shaping my future and the futures of countless others who will follow in my footsteps. I would personally like to thank Mr. Edwards and Mr. Revere for attending my signing day. It really meant a lot to me, having your support on and off the field. So on behalf of the entire baseball community, we, the Class of 2024, want to extend our heartfelt thanks to each and every one of you. Thank you for believing us, for supporting in our, for investing in our future, and for providing us with the platform to become the best versions of ourselves. Your generosity will leave a lasting legacy, not just on the field, but in the hearts and minds of Bastrop baseball players. Thank you once again for your invaluable support. As a token of our appreciation, the seniors would like to give each of you a signed baseball and a copy of our home games.
That'll take us into our action items, and we will consider adoption of a resolution to employ or accept volunteers as chaplains. Our presenter is Dr. Christy Lee, deputy superintendent.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Edwards, Mr. Munchink, and members of our school board. Tonight, I would like to inform you about Texas Education Code 23.001, which became effective September 1st, 2023. After my presentation, you will be asked to consider a recommendation. Each school board in the state must take a record vote no later than March 1st of There we go. Texas Education Code 23.001 provides for two options related to a chaplain program. The board may choose to hire a chaplain as an employee or may choose to allow a chaplain to volunteer. The role outlined in statute is to, quote, "provide support, services, and programs for students." Unlike other employees in the district, no certification is required from the State Board for Educator Certification under TEC 23.001. As a very involved school board, you are well aware of the types of support services and programs that BISD has available. But for the benefit of our audience tonight and the public who may be listening and watching, I wanted to share a little bit about this. So what are the support services and programs currently provided for children and students in BISD? This clicker's not working very well, or it's just me. I'll take it. Okay, okay. Jacob, you may have to help me there in the back. There it goes. Okay. BISD has a school counselor at every school. Secondary schools have multiple. School counselors in Texas have a master's degree, pass a rigorous exam, and receive extensive training in working with children, adolescents, and teens. We are blessed to have an amazing counselor coordinator who oversees the counselors in our district. We also have licensed social workers and master social workers, as well as social worker interns who serve as family and student support specialists. Social workers also are required to have a degree and have to pass a rigorous exam plus log clinical hours in order to earn a license. Our social worker team specializes in connecting students and families with resources in our community and in addressing unique child and family needs. BISD also has a campus behavior support program with behavior specialists to help support teachers and to help students identified with challenging behavior needs function successfully at school. We have a robust, multi-tiered systems of support program that includes trauma-informed care and social-emotional learning. Nearly the entire staff in BISD has been trauma-informed care-trained, and each week, our students take part in lessons and discussions centered around good decision-making, self-regulation, self-control, positive self-image, conflict resolution, managing stress, and so much more that help them live their daily lives. To help address mental health care, the mental health needs of our students, Bastrop ISD participates in TEACHAT, and that stands for Texas Child Health Access Through Telemedicine. Our counselors and social workers refer students that come to them who have needs for mental health counseling, and with parent approval, they're given access to a series of free virtual mental health counseling services, and then referrals to licensed mental health professionals in our community. In addition, we have which is right over here on Hill Street and Cedar Street at the back part of where Circa and Genesis are located. The Family Resource Center connects students with a closed closet, emergency food supplies, and access to resources such as housing assistance, WIC, Salvation Army, as well as GED and ESL training for parents to help support their children. And last but not least, we have a great mentor program that connects a caring adult with a child in need of a positive role model. Our mentors have to pass a background check and undergo training to be a mentor through the Check and Connect program. I know we have board members and former board members who routinely give of their time to mentor a student. It makes a tremendous difference, so thank you very much. We are so proud of the numerous supports, services, and programs that we provide for our students, and we are grateful for your support and involvement in these efforts. Chaplains are another source of caring adults in our community, and we would love to see them volunteer in our schools through our mentor program. We currently have pastors from several local churches who do this, and we appreciate their commitment to mentoring a child. And of course, if a chaplain meets the job requirements of any position we have open, that could include things like a counselor, or an MTSS coach, or behavior specialist, social worker, we would certainly consider them to become a valued employee in BISD. Regarding Texas Education Code 23.001 and the recommended vote, it is recommended that the board continue with our current practice to allow chaplains as visitors and volunteers, as outlined in policy and regulation, and to consider chaplains for employment for any position for which they meet the job requirement, and not adopt a separate policy under Chapter 23 of the Texas Education Code as presented.
Any discussion or questions for Dr. Lee? Ms. Catt.
If we were to approve this tonight, I've spoken to several chaplains over the period, over the course of the day, and they are working on programs. Dale mentioned tonight and others that I've spoken to, they are working on programs. Does approval of this for now preclude having a presentation and possibly approving official chaplains for our district at a later time?
So, no, it doesn't. The Board of Trustees routinely revisits policies, and in fact, it was about three years ago that we revisited all policies in Bastrop ISD. And that's kind of a recommended schedule, is every three years to consider new policies.
Years, right? I mean...
That would be a board decision.
Okay.
Yeah, for one, thank you for being here. Thank you for the input, the emails. I don't think we've had this big a turnout since the COVID mask, and so this is a lot better topic, and it's, everybody's wanting to help and help move things forward. The nice thing about it is, what a lot of y'all are wanting to do, you could have been doing for the last 10, 20 years at Bastrop ISD, our policies are in place. And so they're still in place, so it's not like we possibly need another new policy. And we will entertain any plans, run it through the superintendent, and they can look at them. I asked a question with Mr. Edwards. If a chaplain puts together a plan and they would like to donate some time at one of our schools and would like to have a room to be able to do that, and they'd be there a certain amount of hours and kids wanted to come by, that's possible. But there's also a lot of things like safety and security. We get audited by the state, okay? Every door is locked going down these hallways and in these classrooms, and also active shooter training. And there's just a lot of training that even our substitute teachers go through as well. And we're, I hope that, please, get involved, put together a plan. Can we use the help? Absolutely. It's just the state put this in front of us to basically have a yes or no vote, and it's, the vote is not, that I see so far, is not to keep chaplains out of our school. We want the help. We want the mentoring. We desperately need, I've been mentoring for over 20 years at many different campuses, and I know the needs that are out there and that I've definitely seen them, and so you can definitely make a difference. Plus, being aware of all the resources that we have that Dr. Lee presented too, to be able to direct these children, possibly these parents. I believe we have a trustee that's possibly been doing this for 10 years, Ms. Ruiz, working in the schools, working with the youth at our church, trying to provide resources and things like that. So please, just, there's been a little bit of miscommunication or information out there on the emails, that's okay. Sometimes people interpret things wrongly, but, you know, we welcome the help and definitely want to, I like Mr. Eskew's idea of a plan, and hopefully we can modify policies around a plan and to keep, like you said, this is the beginning of things and what we can do. Any other board member have any questions?
For me, can y'all hear? You know, I grew up in a Catholic school. My mom was a teacher, and she's taught in public school system for 34 years, and she put me in the private school because in New Orleans, the public school wasn't up to snuff, not just educationally, but also spiritually. And so for me, it's hard for me to sit here and not take a chance at something that the state of Texas is trying to do. And I'm not saying I know all the details. I, you know, I hear talks about plans and what's the plan going forward and what it's gonna look like. I don't know what that'll look like, but I have a hard time voting no to not doing something that the government is actually allowing.
Any other comments from the board? All right.
For me, the very open-ended nature of this whole requirement by the legislature to throw the term chaplain out there without any definition of what the, any requirements would be for that, what any program would be for that, what any oversight, what protections there are, not only for the children, but for the chaplains and the circumstances that they're gonna, would be serving in, as we say in schools, are not the safe places that they were when a lot of us grew up. Their safety has become our number-one priority, and it's a very complicated, multi-layered system that requires very strict definitions and rules. That's one thing that we were not given any direction on at all by the state on this particular recommendation. And to give an open-ended yes to whatever seems irresponsible to the people that we are the most responsible, required to be responsible to, which are the students of this district. That's who we are, trustees of the students of this district. We're elected by the public, but we represent the students, and that's our main concern and our main focus. And anything we can do to help those students and to protect those students is always, has always been our goal in this board, and we've been single-minded in that, I think. I would not want to serve on a board that was not so single-mindedly focused on the success of our students. And I don't see we're muddying up the water with a program that has no guidelines, no definitions, and no roles is going to benefit our students in a positive way when there's...
Part of order, please. Mr. Moore.
When there is a program, a multi-layered program already in existence that's run and manned by highly-trained professionals and who are specialists in dealing with students and with developing minds, one reason why it's been eight, nine years that we brought our own police department online is because we had relied before on community policing. Community policing, sheriffs, DPS officers, city policemen are used to dealing with adults, and they respond to people with their training as an adult interventionist. That does not work with children, and I think that you could talk to any one of our very qualified and very dedicated policemen on our force that we have today, they will tell you that this policing, if you want to call it that, being present in the schools as a law enforcement representative is very different than being a policeman, a law enforcement person in the general public. And that specialized dedication and training, of which they have undergone a great deal as well, is, I think, irreplaceable and is not something that people are born with necessarily. They can be, one with the passion to care and the want to and desire to care, but I think that the training is paramount to both guaranteeing the success of the program and to protection of our students.
Isabella, just a question for you. If chaplains were to come in and volunteer at your campus, set hours that you knew they were there, do you think that'd be very received at your campus?
You know, I believe that BISD, at the heart of it, we care, you know? But I also know we're an organization made with people. People make mistakes, people miss things, and those things have great consequences that we have seen, right? But I also know, you know, having support helps. Having the chaplains would help. But my only concern is, what is the certification? What is the background check, right? Because we can't just let any adult come, no matter how much they care, we need to make sure that they are qualified to help our students, right? Both spiritually, but also, you know, just working in the program to meet their needs. Our campus, along with our other campuses, are full of students with diverse needs and diverse backgrounds with things unimaginable, right? It's very different from how it used to be a decade ago, however many years ago, you know? I'm a high school student, I don't even understand every high school student, you know? And so it's like, I want to say yes, but I also want to make sure, is it going to be safe? And if we can guarantee that it's gonna be safe, we can guarantee that it's gonna be worked, and we can set that out, then, yes. But, you know, that's...
Isabella.
I also agree with Gabby. As a high school student, it does really help to have, like, help and support there, but I'm also thinking about, like, the safety of the other students, like, the qualifications for this is a little bit, I don't know, because, yeah, so, I want to say yes, but then there's a, like, a part of me that's, like, also thinking about the other students at my school because not everyone is religious, so I don't want other students to feel uncomfortable because I wouldn't personally, but there's other students that would be, so you have to also think about the other students and not just the students who would be okay with it, you know?
Thank you very much. So, just listening, and we're gonna have a recommendation here in just a little bit. The door's open to volunteer. The door's open for these ideas. The door's open for putting together a plan that's out there, and as you can see, even hearing from the students, social media travels fast, and we gotta get this off to the right start, or it'll get a bad rap, and then you won't have anybody possibly coming to see you if this is something that is put together and we move along. And so, the recommendation that's given, we currently have policies in place that allow these things to move these programs forward, and through the recommendation of the superintendent after they've reviewed them, and our police chief and all those things have been marked off and the training is done, I feel that this is, you know, something that could be really great for us. So I have chosen not to use the resolution process for this agenda item. Instead, I will entertain a motion regarding the same topic and call for a record vote as we would with any other agenda item.
Prove that the board continue with their current practice to allow chaplains as visitors, volunteers, as outlined in the policies and regulation, and to consider chaplains for employment for any position for which they meet job requirements, and not adopt a separate policy under Chapter 23 of the Texas Education Code as presented.
We have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed.
Two.
Two?
Two.
Okay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, our next agenda item is to consider approval of the 2024-2025 academic calendar. Our presenter is Kendra Mock, Director of School Improvement and Federal and State Programs. Smack, can you give us just a second here?
Monk.
Monk, I get it right.
I'm sharing the options for the 24-25 instructional calendar for BISD. Our District Improvement Committee is charged with recommending an academic calendar that best suits the needs of our BISD students, families, teachers, and staff. The committee reviewed several iterations of the calendar and provided valuable feedback and suggestions to improve our calendar for the academic success of all students. Throughout the process, all campuses and members of the committee are given an opportunity to impact the final product shared and voted on by all BISD stakeholders. Here is a timeline of the work the District Improvement Committee put in to bring the current calendar drafts you have before you. We met as a committee in December to review, upgrade, and provide feedback on the working drafts. Committee members were provided a template if they wanted to create their own version of the 24-25 calendar on their own, and those drafts were taken into consideration as well. Additionally, our campus principals reviewed the upgraded drafts and provided feedback. The calendar was sent out to voters mid-January, and all district stakeholders had the option to provide feedback. This slide shows you some detail about the opportunities for feedback, where you can see that the call to look over the proposed calendars was a joint effort between district staff and campus staff. Here are some of the parameters around our instructional calendar. We ensure that school ends by June 1st, and we recognize federal holidays. Our calendar totals 187 total days for teaching staff and a minimum of 75,600 instructional minutes for students. Here is a side-by-side look at the calendar options for 24-25, along with a gray column that compares our current school year calendar. Boxes that are highlighted in blue indicate that there is no difference between the two calendar drafts. You can see that the options only differ by one student instructional day. Thanksgiving break and spring break are identical, and the student winter break differs by one day. Our proposed dates for spring break matches the ACC instructional calendar, which is of great importance since we partner with ACC on our secondary campuses. Continuing with the comparison, you can see that both calendars reflect 17 or 18 staff development or preparation days, but the actual dates vary. It's important to note that these development days, no matter when they happen, are a vital part of our planning and training necessary to provide the best educational opportunities for our students. Draft A offers all staff at least one dedicated staff holiday per month. As you saw earlier, voting for our calendar options was made available to all BISD staff and community January 17th through the 31st. We had 2,129 respondents, which is a 15% increase in voting over last year, and the votes were split pretty evenly, with 51.5% voting for Calendar A and 48.5% voting for Calendar B. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about these calendar options.
Or the year before, there were a lot of early release days. I guess that hasn't made a comeback yet.
It hasn't. The data on that with student attendance was very poor. We did have some positive feedback on it, but overall, with the lost instructional time, it just didn't end up being of value. The input from our staff and community, our recommendation today is that the board adopt Calendar A for the 24-25 school year.
Entertain a motion at this time?
2024-2025 Bastrop ISD School Calendar as Presented.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, this time we'll move into our public hearing. Our public hearing on the district...
We did have some positive feedback on it, but overall, with the lost instructional time, it just didn't end up being of value. The input from our staff and community, our recommendation today is that the board adopt Calendar A for the 24-25 school year.
Entertain a motion at this time?
2024-2025 Bastrop ISD School Calendar as presented.
Get... All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. This time, we'll move into our public hearing. Our public hearing on the district annual report, including Texas Academic Performance Report. We have Rachel Ripke, Associate Director of Accountability and Professional Learning. Welcome.
Having me here tonight, School Board, Mr. President, and Mr. Edwards, I'm here to share with you the 2023 District Annual Report. This is required to have a public hearing on this report by Texas Education Code, Chapter This report is a high-level report with the details included in your board book, and in two weeks, we will have the public report posted on the website and also paper copies housed at the district and on each campus. Okay? There are eight sections to this report that we will cover today, and what is shared with you today is not new information. This has already been shared with you in several past board meetings, and so I am just going to hit the highlights of all of these sections. And this is to bring a final close to 22-23. So nothing, again, is new. It's all a review of everything from last year. Okay? So the first section we have is from the TAPER report. So this is the 22-23 TAPER report. This report includes PMS information for our district and for our campus, and also student assessment data. This report is a PDF that is published and posted on TexasAssessment.gov, and is also going to be on our district website and housed on each campus. Typically, the report on the cover page includes the district name and campus name and number, and it would also include the accountability rating, special education distinction or determination status, and distinctions. But none of those are included at this time, because we do not have our final A through F accountability ratings, as we are waiting for that legislative decision. So there's still litigations going on about the 2023 accountability ratings. So that is not included, because it is not released at this time. But what you will see in your TAPER report is student STAR performance for 2022 and 2023. There's three levels: Approaches, Meets, and Masters. And this is reported for each subject, including the ACT, SAT, each grade level, and then also by enrolled grade levels. Okay? And when we're looking at the data, Approaches is the level that high school graduates need to achieve on their STAR assessment in order to meet the recommendations for graduation. As a reminder of what has been shared previously with you guys about last year's assessment, this assessment was redesigned, the STAR assessment. And so last year, they added it to be online. It has new item types, which are technology-enhanced items, short-constructed response items. Also, the reading test now includes evidence-based writing at all grade levels, so it's not isolated to only certain grade levels. It's in all of our reading assessments, and also it includes cross-curricular passages. So that is some of the new pieces that was on STAR last year. Also, our accountability was redesigned, and so we have revised cut scores. Domain 2 is now a Growth Plus model, which includes looking at accelerated growth for our students who had not previously passed. Domain 3, they revised the structure and how that is calculated. And then also, there was changes to CCMR, and then revised scoring methodology for the whole district's rating. So a lot of changes occurred last year, which is probably one of the reasons that we don't have an accountability rating for this year. And then also, it's very challenging to compare 2022 to 2023, because there was so much change within the assessment and also our accountability system. Okay? So looking at our data, this, again, is just a quick overview. Dr. Warford did share our data with you back in September's meeting. But just to highlight a few things, this is a graph of our overall performance for our reading assessments. Again, you can see that in 2020, there was no assessment due to COVID, and then we had the STAR redesigned between 22 and 23. But overall, our, we maintained or, you know, had slight changes, but varied very little. So the purple line is Approaches, the blue line is Meets, and the green line is Masters. Looking at math, you will see the same thing. Again, we had an increase or minimal to no change in our math scores. Another part of the TAPER is the Student Progress, which is Academic Growth. You will only see 2023 academic growth right now, due to the changes and how growth was calculated for 2023 accountability. This report will also show annual growth for all students, and then growth for specific students who are receiving accelerated instruction, according to House Bill 4545. Also, we are required to report on our performance of our emergent bilingual students and the type of program services that we provide for those students, and so that is outlined in that report there. Some things to highlight there, students who are served by our bilingual program showed an increase in performance of Approaches at 3% last year, and then also, the students who are served by our ESL, or our English as a Second Language, showed a 6% gain in Approaches last year. The next section is, of the TAPER, is STAR participation. So it compares the 22 to 23. We have maintained our 98 to 99 participation for STAR. And then, as we move on into the TAPER, it discusses attendance and graduation, and BISD has maintained a strong graduation rate. The following section of the TAPER looks at career, college, and military readiness. This is the indicators or components that are comprised of the high school accountability system. So this work shows, I mean, this report shows the work that our students are doing towards college, career, and military readiness post-graduation. This report, though, does lag a year behind, so really, when you're looking at the CCMR, it's really data for your students who graduated in 21, 22. So that data is a year behind in the TAPER. And then, in closing of the TAPER, it does have student information, staff information, and our program information. So that is all outlined in the TAPER. So that finishes Section 1 of our annual review, looking at the TAPER report. The next section is Section 2, our PMS standard reports. This is from 21-22, so this also lags a year behind. At November's board meeting, Deana Edgar shared with you the district's 21-22 Financial Integrity or First Rating, which was superior, the highest rating possible. So congratulations to her and the business and financial team on that. So that is included in that report. Section 3 is the district's accreditation status. So the commissioner releases an accreditation status based on accountability ratings, financial accountability ratings, data integrity, and program area deficiencies, and Bastrop ISD's accreditation rating is accredited. All right. Section 4 is the Campus Improvement Plans. This is, what's included is last year's campus improvement plan. So again, this is a recap of everything from last year. So this is the 22-23 improvement plans that you will see in there. And so the summative review occurred in April at each campus, and so you will see, if it has a blue arrow, then they are continuing that objective into the next school year. If it has a red X, they've discontinued it. And if it has a full green circle, then that means they have completed that objective for their campus improvement plan. So Kendra Monk shared with you this year's campus improvement plans back at the September board meeting. So you should have access to the current improvement plans for each campus. And then Section 5 is a report on our violent or criminal incidents. This report specifically looks at specific discipline codes that we are required to report on as Section 39.306. A few things to note in this is that our numbers have continued to be low, and Dr. Janelle Morris is our Director of Student Services, and so she has shared that our school's violent prevention measures include SROs at each campus. In the district, our MTSS coaches, they work to promote social-emotional learning that supports a safe and respectable and responsible behavior at our elementarys and middle school campuses. And then intervention measures include campus administrations that investigate allegations of bullying, harassment, and discrimination, which result in supportive measures that may include stay-away agreements, schedule changes, alternate passing periods counseling, and assigned seating on district transportation. So in Bastrop ISD, we also have social workers to service our students at the intermediate, middle school, and high school campuses. And I know Dr. Lee talked a lot about all the services that we do provide. So in addition to our alignment with our board priorities and superintendent goals, the campus and district include performance objectives in their campus improvement plans that have strategies targeting safety and security of all of our students. Okay? And then Section 6 is Student Performance and Post-Secondary Education. So this report actually is on our students who graduated in 2020. So this lags, because this report actually tracks students into their first year of Texas higher education institutions to see who had attended those institutions and what their GPA was, or the range of GPA after the conclusion of their first year. So that is what Section 6 is, is tracking our students post-secondary. And then Section 7 is the progress of the district on each campus toward meeting board goals that are adopted by House Bill 3. This section, the details on this section was presented by Dr. Amanda Brantley and Jennifer Amberly, so they talked about this in our November meeting in regards to early childhood literacy and our CCMR. And then the last section is just for your reading. If you want to catch up on TAPER vocabulary, you can look at the TAPER glossary that is included there for you. And there's also a Spanish version that will be released. It might already now be in there, but yes, that is there for you. So as a reminder, the, this report will be posted on our district website within two weeks. It will be housed as a paper copy in each of our campuses and then also at the Service Center. And then, if you have any questions, you're welcome to reach out to me or any of our directors, as they all have pieces of this report. So are there any questions?
For Ms. Ripke? Any questions from the audience? All right. If there are no questions, then this will conclude our... Oh, we got one, yes, sir. Public hearing, yes, sir.
... in September, so I'm going to let him speak.
Any more from the audience? All right. If there are none, this will conclude our public hearing. Thank you very much. Moving along to the superintendent's report, we have the curriculum reporters for information only. We have a finance report, which is budget and property value update. Our presenter is Deana Edgar, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good words, and Board of Trustees. This evening, I'll be providing a brief, high-level preliminary overview of budget development for 24-25. Let's try this one. There we go. So last year, around this time, I stood before you, very hopeful about what may transpire during the 88th legislative session, with enormous amount of projected revenue that the state had to work with. This provided a remarkable opportunity for historical action, and the Comptroller even, that's a quote from the Comptroller. While the legislature was able to move forward with substantial additional tax compression and an increased homestead exemption of $100,000, as well as implementation of safety and security mandates that came with funding short of covering these costs, what we did witness was a school finance bill held hostage to a school voucher program. With the House and Senate at impasse, school districts were left with absolutely zero additional funding. So what does this inaction mean for the state of school finance? So there's not been an increase to the basic allotment since 2019, while at the same time, we've all experienced record-high inflation across the board, exceeding 20% during that same time frame. Quoting one of my colleagues in North Texas, "It's a totally different world right now, yet we're still expected to operate with $20,000." ESTER funding is set to expire in September, which allowed us to limp along to cover vital expenditures. There was also a formula change to the socioeconomic tiers, and we were just talking about our high, frame-reduced socioeconomic, 76%. As a result, the district lost $1.2 million annually in funding, beginning with last year, so two years running, $2.4 million. And we're now experiencing is a recognized flaw in the hold-harmless calculation for tax compression. So there are groups out there lobbying for a revised calculation so that districts can receive additional funding, but it's a number dollar-for-dollar. So before we move into where we're starting for 24-25, I thought it would be a good thing to take a look back at what we have been able to accomplish for the past four years with the budget. And I know this table's a little bit busy, so I will walk you through it. So we've been able to offer a minimum of a 3% raise each year, with the past two years even higher for teachers and paraprofessionals. Starting teacher pay moved from $48,200 in 2019 to $56,000 this year, this past year. We did use ESTER funds to provide one-time retention pay for three years in a row. We increased stipends and provided equity adjustments all four years, and we increased substitute pay this past year. And we also offered an attendance incentive program with the use of ESTER funds for two years as well. Enrollment has increased by 1,600 students, while the tax rate has decreased by 36.5 cents, and again, highlighting the five-year gap in any student funding increase during this time. ESTER funds actually have, the ESTER funds we've expended have assisted with allowing us to do many of these things, as well as have a direct correlation to our fund balance achievements of maintaining at least 90 days of operating expenditures. And if you recall, we did set aside some assigned fund balance for bringing operations in-house this past year. So depending how the year ends up, we may end up with a slight decline in fund balance, but we'll see how that shakes out. So moving into 24-25, let's start by taking a look at our expected property value growth. So very early projections put us at about 6% year-over-year. Now, you will see this number change from what I received right now to when we get our preliminary certified values in April, and then you'll see that number change again in July, when we get our certified numbers. And that's because all the under-review protests, and that'll all work itself out. Typically, property values will decline between April and July. While it's good to have some idea of property value growth, keep in mind, the district does no longer benefit from this growth, other than additional tax compression. And this next slide brings us to our starting point with 24-25. So our ADA recovery, our attendance recovery is still struggling, but we have been making small improvements over the past several years. Low attendance is still being seen throughout the country, so this is not unique to Bastrop. But as a reminder, 1% increase in attendance is $840,000 in state aid, so a 2% increase, which would bring us back to normal, 1.7 million. And it's pretty substantial. So we're currently forecasting revenue to increase by about 3 million under the current hold-harmless conditions. I do expect this number to change, because we are expecting a formula change, and there's also... balancing strategies and create efficiencies, including expiration of alternate revenue sources as a short-term solution. And then our last slide outlines the budget development timeline. The board did receive the budget calendar in January. Today, we're kicking off the preliminary information. We'll provide additional briefings in March and April. And then we'll work towards an early adoption in May, but we do have until June to hold the hearing and the adoption if needed. And then finally, looking forward to the 89th legislative session with a school finance bill in 2025. So really, our strategy here is to try and get through 2425 and have the legislature, you know, produce a school finance bill for 25, 26 and the next biennium. And, you know, that's, hope is not a strategy, so we will have a Plan B, but hopeful that the legislature will do something in the next biennium.
Are we, with losing the Ester funds and the lack of support from the state of Texas, we're about, we're trying to make up about $5 million shortfall?
That's correct. So part of our strategy is also, we'll have a little bit of Ester remaining. Remember, Ester does not go away until September 30th. So we'll have some Ester that'll move forward, and we can do some offsets from July 1 through September 30th. We'll just kick that kind of forward, and then, that's part of our balancing strategy. Yes, ma'am. So there's a couple of different things, but we have a lot of grants. So we'll probably offset some things into some grants as a temporary solution for a year, again, to get us through, just get us through 2425.
Does, do, we have churches that rent our facilities. Is that a source of income for?
That is a source of income. And it's funny, I just was speaking with our AD, our Athletic Director, about looking at all of that facility rentals and taking a look at that as another revenue source that we can utilize.
But traditionally, we're not in the business to make money off of our local community. What we try to do is we just charge them so that we can cover our costs. And so there are some opportunities, like the PAC where we can make money, and maybe the stadium, maybe now the baseball field. We've had a lot of people reaching out to use those facilities. But for our churches and groups like that, we generally just charge them our fees.
Okay.
Try to, you know, be good community partners.
Other strategies we're looking at, so I'm watching this year like a hawk. And again, the hold harmless formulas, if they do change, that'll infuse additional revenue into this year, 23, 24. If I get that additional revenue, what I can do is look and see, okay, I can pay off a lease, and that'll relieve the general fund for next year. And things like that, you know, there's a lot of moving parts in the balancing strategy, if you will.
I noticed there weren't any dates there for budget workshops for the board. I assume that as things develop, we'll be able to work those in to keep us abreast of things because it sounds like it's going to be undergoing significant evolution.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Legislature, they like to say they gave school districts $2 billion for safety and security.
Right.
That wasn't enough to meet what they mandated.
Absolutely.
So we're having to make up that difference under that, correct?
Slowly, yeah. With additional staffing and all the things that they want us to do, yeah.
And then apparently, there's still the $30 billion surplus they're just holding on to without giving us money for.
That's correct. Yeah, it's really unbelievable to me.
Well, early voting started today. Any other questions from Mrs. Edgar? All right, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yeah. Moving, let's look here, budget, property, then we have the administrative services and human resources, as well as operations reports are for information only, which leads us to our police department report, state mandated Texas code for criminal procedure, Article 2.132B, racial profiling report. Chief Bunch, good to see you.
I did not talk like a teenager going through puberty. I've been fighting it up a respiratory situation, so. But yes, as of, what we have to do, March 1 of every year, we have to submit a racial profiling. Part of the reason why we have body cameras and card cameras. Did I go backwards or something? Where am I at? No, let's not, let's not go back there.
If you want to revisit Dr. Lee's presentation, feel free.
No, I'm good with racial profiling.
I'm with you. Here we go. There we go. So by March 1 of each year, I have to say that I actually came to you and told you about this information before I can hit submit. And we also have to say that we review body cam footage of officers during traffic stops. It's just part of the process. We don't write very many tickets. We're not the county or the city and write a ton of tickets. But we have written 278, we've done 278 traffic stops. And in that, you'll see that we have to show the streets, that we did it on the county roads, highways. We have to say whether we knew the race of the person before the traffic stop or after the traffic stop. And then we have to go through the race, the ethnicity of the person, and the percentage of how many of those tickets were written. Or we don't write tickets to everyone, but we also do our warning citations. We have to say whether the male or female. And then it shows the reason for the stop, if we had a pre-existing knowledge of it, whether a violation of law, was it a moving traffic violation or non-moving traffic violation? Was there a search conducted and was consent given, yes or no? And then we have to say whether or not any contraband was found during that search. And then what we do at that point is look at what was taken or what was recovered, verbal warnings, written warnings. And you'll see most of ours are written warnings, citations. We don't do any verbals. That helps us to track the information that we need for this racial profiling. And was physical force used? No physical force was used. And then what we have to do is we have to break it down by population. And so what we have to do is we have to use the county, we have to use the city, and we also have to use our population and demographics when we break it down. So we break it down through all those three different subcategories. That way, we can see that Bastrop County Census, the City of Bastrop, and then BISD. And that's our racial profiling that we'll have to present to the state of Texas by March 1. Do you have any questions? Any questions for Chief Bunch?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Not necessarily about the report.
Okay.
But with regard to the colony and developments with the city engineer regarding school zone signs.
It's a county engineer.
Is anything going on with that?
So as of now, the way it's listed is they're not saying no to the school zone permanently. They're saying they want to revisit that. They want a new study done to with how many children are walking compared to adults. They want a study done based on cars. They're not opposed to signage, but it won't be a school zone. It's just showing kids walking in the school crossing area, that kind of stuff. And so I've, it's unusual, but it's how they decided they wanted, the city wants to, the county wants to do it. Matter of fact, there was just some emails sent today back and forth between the construction engineers and the county regarding it. From Commissioner's Court to put a school zone? Actually, it's from the engineer, the engineer for the county. So it's right now the speed limit is 30 miles an hour. He says he doesn't believe we need to have a 20 mile an hour zone there. My only disagreement with that was, is that typically in a 30 mile an hour zone, law enforcement will give you to 38, 39 miles an hour for the issue of citation. School zones, you're not given grace. And so discrepancy of it just being a 10 mile an hour difference, I don't necessarily agree with. It can be up to a 20 mile an hour difference because typically, and again, in a school zone, we don't give you grace. The kid's safety comes first. And so what they want to do is they want to look at the traffic in that area to see if it's even warranted. And so we'll do whatever they need, and hopefully we'll stay with it. And they're not, they didn't ask for the language to be completely out of the present, out of the agreement. They just simply said that they would like for us to revisit that at another time.
And will crosswalks also be a topic of discussion?
Crosswalk is going to be there. And so all they ask for the crosswalk is it to be a little wider for ADA compliance. That they're in agreement with. But what they want to look at is how much foot traffic. And again, they want it broken down by adult versus child. I look for the foot traffic to pick up. The neighborhood's growing, and it's what we really want. We want a neighborhood school. We want kids to be able to walk to school and ride their bike to school and do all the things. We want them to be able to do it safely. And so we're going to continue to work with the county and the county traffic engineers on that.
That they're asking for needs to be paid for by us, I assume.
Yes. Any other questions for Chief Bunch? Thank you very much, chief. All right, moving along here, Deputy Superintendent Reporters for Information Only, which moves us to our consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. On our information items there, we have Board of Trustees calendar of events, enrollment and single budget purchases, more than 50,000 are for information only. Is there any objections to adjourning this meeting? If there are, then the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
I'm waffled. I can do it.